Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the School Committee Finance Subcommittee. I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Nada?
Present.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Mr. Lay. Two present, one absent.
The intention of this meeting is to kind of go over with the public what has transpired up to date as far as this year's budget, what the original budget was that was approved, the amount of cuts that were made then, the amount of cuts that were made since, and where we are. And I have the feeling that this will take more than tonight's meeting. We did schedule three of them. We also want to look at some of the policies and procedures that we have in place or we don't have in place that need to be put in place or have been put in place. Before we begin, I do want to say that I think that the two members of the administration who are sitting here in front of us, the Superintendent Durkin and Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Billy Joe Turner, deserve a lot of congratulations and thank you for the amount of effort and time that they have been putting in to this. They both walked into a very challenging, to say the least, position and have continuously found more and more challenges that they have to overcome. It is my personal opinion that you two have excelled at this and have made great efforts to give us all the information. And I will say that the report that we just received, the auditing report, again, in my opinion, mostly verified everything that you have already told us. You have informed us about all these issues, and I think what that report did was show everyone that you were correct in everything that you have told us. So I think you two have been very unsung heroes in this horrible situation that we're in, and I want to publicly thank you both for everything that you've done up to this point and I know will continue to do. So at this time, I would like to basically turn the meeting over to the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, and if anything along the way, at any time, Mr. Dakota, if you have a question, just feel free to, you know, acknowledge it. All right, thank you. Oh, let's start with Mr. Dakota.
Just a quick comment to say that I support what Mr. Nada said about how much work you have both put in way beyond the scope of what your jobs really should be, and we do appreciate that sincerely, and I hope the city is aware of that as well. So I wholeheartedly concur on that. Thank you.
So at this time, I'd ask Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations, Billy Joe Turner, to share with you the outline that includes, we'll start with the administrators that were, and the staff that were initially cut, additional cuts that needed to be made, and then we'll see where we go from there, and we'll continue on as far as the agenda goes if time allows.
So what I can do is follow along with the agenda that was provided and then answer to each of the bullets. The first bulleted item is a financial and personnel overview, approved budget and positions that were originally eliminated. On the packet that you have, the first, there's an Exhibit A that summarizes all of the budget, but Exhibit B is actually a list of all the originally cut positions before, you know, that were included in the original budget amount. There were 40 positions net. There were 53 positions cut, but then 13 were added back for new schools. So in summary, there were three school administrators, four central office administrators, six teachers, and 27 support staff that included library aides and parers that were cut with the original budget. So do you have any questions on the original cuts? The next bulleted item asks for additional funding received in Chapter 70 along with other sources. Exhibit A is a summary of the original budget along with the modified budget. On this exhibit, you'll see that we received $2.2 million in additional Chapter 70 revenue. That included Chapter 70 supplemental aid, hurricane relief, and emergency relief. The next bulleted item asks for shortfalls discovered during the budget review. As I've explained in the past, we have about $3.2 million in shortfalls along with $1.4 million in unavailable revenue, which means that we had an overall budget deficit of 4.6 that was offset by the $2.2 million in additional revenue. If you look at Exhibit D in your packet, it actually will outline exactly where I got the 1.4 million, I mean, the $3.2 million in underfunded accounts. If you looked at all of these details, there's many miscellaneous, but the three large ones would be transportation, tuition, and sick leave buyback. Transportation continues to increase because the students that are added each month, it constantly fluctuates, but the transportation companies have been doing a great job working with John trying to change the routes or add kids to the routes. For instance, I told you at the last meeting that we had 32 students added and six that left. That was a net of 26 students added, but we only had to add one van. So again, transportation, tuition, and sick leave buyback were the 3.2, the majority of the $3.2 million. Exhibit E is actually a summary of all of the one point, all of the accounts that make up the 1.4 and under, unfunded offsets. So if you went along on the left-hand side, it actually shows you the code, 1,200 Superintendent. That's showing you the category in the budget, so if you wanted to match it to the budget, you'd be able to see exactly where I found these numbers. Any questions with any of those? Because that's a lot of detail. I'm giving an overview until, you know, but if you want me to stop and look at the detail, I can.
One of my questions is when, and maybe Superintendent Durkin will recall us, when, during the original budget discussions, I thought that we had, that emergency relief of $485,000, that's from the hurricane in Puerto Rico, correct?
That's correct.
I thought that money was already included, because I thought we had asked that question. So that money was never included as part of the original revenue in the, in the budget?
In the budget. We had, there were two rounds of that money that came into us. So there was some originally, and then that second round that we received.
Right, that's, thank you. That's, you know, clarification because, you know, I've heard somebody say, "Well, that money was included." Well, it was, as you just said, the first round of it was. Thank you.
So the $3.2 million is listed on Exhibit D, and the $1.4 million is listed on Exhibit E. If I summarized the Exhibit E, the $1.4 million in unavailable offsets, it would be food service, PEG, E-rate, use of facilities, and grants that make up that $1.4 million. The next bulleted item asks for positions presently not filled, combined, or eliminated due to current financial challenges. That is on the first page of, you know, the cover sheet. These are the suggested cuts. We have 12 additional cuts, which include an assistant HR director rather than an HR director position because...
If, yeah, if I may, would you please, because I thought we had an assistant HR director, up until recently anyway.
So the assistant HR director gave her resignation. She's starting at another company, and because of that, this is an opportunity. We actually, we're down to one person in HR right now, and that's Debbie Jarvis, so we do need to post the HR director position as soon as possible and the HR clerk position.
Thank you.
So even though, okay.
I thought the HR position, HR director position had been posted already. Has that, has that been posted?
No, that hasn't been posted. So we were bringing it forward to you this evening. We had originally held off on the position to try, during the slower time of the year, to try to recoup some funding, and we did have Susan Mulligan with us for some time. And additionally, Ms. Turner has been cross-training staff and working with staff to support, but with the resignation of the assistant, we feel that, you know, this is the opportune time to really reconfigure. We have the HR audit with, that provides us with some good feedback, things that we were, we were already thinking about and planning for, but we believe that we absolutely need to post this position, and we'll be bringing that forward to the full committee tonight.
Okay.
The HR director position?
The HR director.
Director. So on the list of 12 additional positions cut include one assistant HR director, one database and systems administration administrator, which was a position that was reorganized, one accountability clerk, two McQ teachers reassigned, one bridge teacher, one in-house suspension teacher, one coordinator educator, I mean, educational television teacher, one TV associate producer, one social worker, one bridge caseworker, and one alternative school coordinator. I have to point out, as you know, if I explained that there are some accounts that were underfunded, sometimes we would find something listed in the budget, for instance, in-house suspension. There were positions in the in-house suspension account, but they weren't necessarily funded. So we have three in-house suspension teachers in the district, but there were only two in the budget, but there were three on payroll. And then there were some times where in the budget they might have, we might have 41 teachers, I mean, or 41 social workers, but there was only enough funding for 36, let's say, because the others were going to be grant-funded. So that's what you see in the budget when, you'll see movement from the grant and revolving account line over. So the overall account balance might not have changed, it's just that the grant wasn't available, so we had to move it over to the general fund. So it's difficult and confusing to put it on here. For instance, here's a perfect example, the coordinator slash educational television or the TV associate producer, as you know, in the budget, they're not really funded. So when I cut it here, it's not making a difference, it doesn't, it wasn't funded. It was charged to the PEG grant that we don't, I mean, or the PEG funds that we were not, that are not available to us. So it's...
Just to be clear, because you were not here at the time, but the night of our school committee meeting, when we approved the budget, we were given information, the school committee, all of us were given information by both the mayor and then the superintendent, that the city manager's office would fund $250,000 in PEG funding. You can go back to the May, I believe it's the May 26 meeting, it's about 12 minutes into that meeting. The manager has since said that that was some type of a misunderstanding or miscommunication because if you recall, the Lowell Sun ran a big story the next day claiming that the city had found an additional half a million dollars for us. They had taken the water and sewage, which was in the budget for $185,000, and claimed with the new meters it would have been closer to $250,000. And as far as I recall, that account for the last few years anyway was charged to the revolving food service account anyway, which probably shouldn't have been. And then this $250 for the PEG funding, so when it came for us to approve, in fact, Ms. Martin and the superintendent had a pretty good conversation about that funding because, you know, it was, she didn't realize that he had put it into the budget that said if we didn't get funded, we wouldn't get that position. But the fact that, you know, the mayor and he had said, so, you know, we did approve that position, and we thought that, you know, that was being funded. So that's why, when it wasn't funded, I know he was, before, before the new season, the new budget session started, he was laid off. He was given his notice. And we had hoped that somewhere along the line, we were going to be able to recoup that, but that didn't turn out.
Since you brought that up, I think it is important to note in the top portion of the cover page where Ms. Turner articulates the 40 positions eliminated, there were, the school committee had, had requested us to provide them with their information around positions that would be on the priority list to bring back if we received additional state funding. And so we were scheduled to, to bring those people back and have discussions around that when we started to learn of these budget shortfalls.
The next item on the bulleted list is the current deficit. As explained at the previous meeting, I was going off of a $2.4 million deficit, and to avoid confusing everyone, I've been sticking to that even when I find small changes because we have a move-in target here. For instance, just today, I'm looking at the special ed lease for the day school, and I was very excited. I thought I found $23,000 because the account was funded for 12 months, but we moved in in August, so I thought we found $23,000. But then it's convulsed when the city CFO luckily called and explained to me that we need insurance because that is not a city-owned business, building, so we need to provide our own insurance, and he's going to help me get some quotes on that, you know. So my point is, it's a move-in target, and every day I find something new. Another example, during the audit, the forensic audit, it was explained, as we've explained to you, that some of the offsets are not available. The food service is one of the prime examples, but another one is use of facilities. You're not supposed to budget against revolving funds unless it already has the money in there. So to put that $500,000 offset when we've only historically received $300 was wrong, but in addition to that, we have $125,000 in an account called student activities. It is different than the student activities that the schools raise on their own. That's separate. The student activity account that we're referring to is when CTI grants the schools, it goes into a use of facilities fund. So the previous administration, which is a great, I mean, a nice idea, they wanted to share this equitably with all of the schools, but unfortunately, when you have a revolving fund, all of the expenses should only be to help you raise that revenue. So in other words, you can use the fund to pay for basketball backboards or anything to do with the building, use of facilities. You know what I mean? So food service should only be used for food service. So in other words, we cannot do that. We have to take that $125,000 back from the schools, which is unfortunate, but we have no choice because it's not legal. So if you don't have any questions with the overall summary, which of course I can go into more detail with any of them, but if you don't have any more questions, I can go into what we have done so far to respond to these. So we are constantly trying to, it's like playing tennis. If we find something, we try to put something into place, even if it's temporary, we try to put internal control in place immediately so that we can deal with the problem. We'll further research it and then find a more, you know, thorough system to implement, but, so nothing's perfect right now. We're just trying to almost stop, you know, stop the bleeding, so to speak. One of the things that we did notice was the attendance, attendance reporting procedures, we're making sure that they're reinstated so that we have accurate attendance, which will save the district on the sick leave buyback. If you have one clerk at a school that's very thorough with reporting attendance, but then you have a new clerk at a different school who didn't know how to, you know, track the teachers, those teachers, even if they're using time, would leave eventually with a higher sick leave balance, and we pay for that. So we're going to implement attendance tracking.
Just from my, I mean, how do we track attendance for, let's start with the teachers and then work our way up?
Well, those are the things, and this is what I tried to explain, we, we have to, so once we identify a problem, it takes a lot, you have to meet with people and ident, because sometimes there's no answer to that, right? So the teachers are the easy one. They're in, they're in X2. So they're in X2, and the clerks at the schools enter their time. But again, if you have a new clerk that may not have been trained properly, then they may not know, or they may not do it constantly. So we gathered that information, and we noticed that there are people that, you know, certain departments report to the executive secretary in that department, and they may track it and even put it into X2, but there's no system in place to, to monitor when people are getting close, you know, to going over their time, and then they owe us that money if they do. So then we have to go after it, right? So to avoid those problems, we, the assistant HR director was helping me run a sick leave accrual report each week, and we would sort by lowest to highest so that we can see the negatives, who's in the hole, who's zero, and who's getting close, and then we can notify payroll to watch. It's like a watch list. So we're, that's what I mean by we're trying to implement systems. Now, the city has Munis, and Munis has a time and attendance module, and I know that eventually they might, they're going to pilot it, one department, but until then, we, that would be what we would use eventually, and then we would enter attendance right into Munis, and it would tie to the payroll.
Okay, thank you. I've got a quick question about the sick days that have been accumulated, because I can remember yearly getting a paper to say, you know, this is, this is what we have according to our records, that you have so many days accumulated, check this over, is it, is it accurate? And if not, you know, notify us to do that. Is that still going on?
Yes.
Okay.
Debbie Jarvis does that.
Okay.
But in the meantime, if you have someone that, instead of, like, say if we just did it, and there's a woman, if she has a baby and she goes on maternity leave, she could go well over her sick time between now and then, so it's important for us to implement the systems now so that we, and I mean that to help the people too, like the actual staff members, because it's not fair. If I was overpaid and I didn't realize it, and then I have to pay it back, that's difficult. So in fairness to them, we have to do this to help them as well so that they don't have this difficult situation in the future. But as far as an answer to your original question, as for the different groups, Central Office, they each report to an executive secretary. The clerks do the school staff, but there were some that weren't, no one's tracking their time, so floating staff. So it was something that was, the school staff did not track them because they're not really in the school. They have a home school, but we're making...
Yeah, I can explain. So we have, we have a number of staff that service a number of schools. So they have, they might service three or four schools, and they do that through the course of the week. And so they might sign in, some didn't sign into their schools as they reported, and so we wanted to, we wanted to make sure that we put systems in place that support them. We've been meeting with the unions on this so that it, it doesn't become a cumbersome process, and we appreciated the feedback that, that we heard around it. So we've established two time sheets. One time sheet for the staff that are there every day, all day, and then another time sheet that if you're in the building on a Monday and a Wednesday, you will sign in on those days, and those will be submitted on a regular basis just as, as the full-time staff in that school. And then we'll also put in a mechanism where whatever school is their home-based school, so we're in the process of confirming all of that right now, that, so if it's, someone services a school for two or three days a week, and then maybe on two days services another school, the home-based school would be the one that would track the attendance. So, so it's, it's systems that, and procedures that we need to put in place, and we aren't certain, honestly, as, as Ms. Turner said, that this is the best mechanism, but it's what we have right now that will at least safeguard us from... but it's what we have right now that will at least safeguard us from overpayments and not being able to reconcile vacations and sick time and all of that.
An example is that when we found out that we didn't realize someone had quit, we decided to immediately put a system in place where they would send down their sign-in sheets. Well, the sign-in sheets, they have many different handwritings, and it's very difficult to read, but that was all we had at that moment. So, at least we could count, even if we couldn't read it, right? But we could count. Now, we have identified a system, or a report in X2, Aspen, that will give a summary of all the people that are out at one particular building in a week, and that's now sent to payroll so that they have a reconciliation. And it also helps identify if someone hasn't been to work, and, you know, it just helps us identify the HR issues, which is the next system. In the HR report, as the superintendent mentioned, we had already thought of a lot of the things that they said, so it was good, because now we have.
Confirmation.
Confirmation that that would be a good idea. But one of them was, they mentioned having an HR stipend or position at each school. Well, we can't afford that, but what we can do is control that from the central office by creating a summary form of all the changes that have occurred. Anybody on maternity leave, anyone out for extended absences, FMLAs, anyone that has quit and left the district. If we have this summary sheet that we send to them, we're saying, this is what we think you have, please confirm, and have their clerical, or their clerk or administrative assistant, actually, and the principal sign off on it. Now, we have a reconciliation between what's happening at the school and us, so it allows us to catch any mistakes or differences then. We think that's going to be extremely helpful since it will, you know, identify issues very early, so. The next one is retirement tracking. We're streamlining retirement tracking, which will give us ample notice on our sick leave buyback projections. So, right now, we're battling some backlogs of my MTRS and deduction reporting and retirement applications due to all the transition with staff, and now we're having the retirees email their principal, the superintendent and I, so now we know right from the beginning, rather than what they used to do, which is drop off their application downtown, and then it goes through the process, and we may not even know about it. So, now, when it comes to me, I immediately confirm to them that we, I received it, notifying the staff members that assist with this process. But on top of that, I now have a spreadsheet that I'll do if, for one of our upcoming meetings. But I'm going to be able to take the retiree, I can run their current sick leave, their available sick time, and determine what, like, I can estimate what their sick leave buyback will be at the end of the year. Of course, they could use 10 days between now and then, but at least I have an estimate, and that allows me to project the sick leave buyback. It also helps me during budgeting. In normal years, you would budget, even when you know you have 20 retirees and they come back with people that cost half of what they cost. Normally, you would leave that in, knowing that you have all kinds of changes, unexpected changes. That's how you end up with the surplus. But right now, we don't want to do that right now. We're, we don't want to make cuts that are unnecessary. So, this retiree list, I have 25 people since starting this, 25 people that have notified us they're going to retire this year. So, that's giving us a good idea of what we are going to need. The account is currently only funded at 700,000. You know, I did suggest put in the 500,000, but in Munis, because we haven't approved that yet, it says 700,000. We've already spent 415,000, and if, you know, so, and we have 25 more people coming, so. And that's only the ones that notified me, that I have their names, like their concrete and people, so.
I can just add to it, another system that has been put in place is that when the person does notify, they automatically receive, here's what you need to do, consider, you know, step by step. So, what we're finding is that when people are coming and, well, working with MTRS and the state folks about all of the backlogs that we have, is that what we're finding is that people might have come in, dropped off something, but they may have been missing a form. And that was held up, for whatever reason, and that, so, we have to scurry around, we get that paperwork. So, what Billy Joe has put in place is a system where it's, this is what you need, call me if you have questions. And so, that's been really helpful to let the retiree, pending retiree, know officially what it is that they've put in and what they still need.
The complicated part is that we have the generation that have, we lived before the technology was here, right? So, in the city of Lowell, we had Munis, I implemented it in 2000, so I was part of that process. But prior to that, we had something called Soltis or something like that, and that was from 1993 to 2000. Prior to 1993, it's in the basement, and it's in card forms, and it could be, Debbie Jarvis has done an extraordinary job trying to organize it all, but you still, these, this is paper. So, it's very difficult to go back, and if we can't find it in the basement, then we have to work with City Hall to get, you know, W2s and try to backtrack. If it doesn't match, if the W2 doesn't match the contract language, then we have to try to figure out what happened to that person that year. Why didn't they receive the full amount of the contract, you know, sick leave buybacks and things like that? So, anyhow, that's why this retirement tracking is really something that we need to do.
I know this may sound like a strange question. I know we have a policy that, you know, if we're going to do layoffs, they have to be notified by a certain date. Do we have any policy like that about retirements, where, I mean, you're, like you just pointed out, you're trying to plan your budget, and at the same time, we have the whole HR issue with having to find new, you know, replacement staff? So, do we have a policy when you have to notify your principal or the school department by such a date prior to retiring, Mr. Dakota, since you've been through it?
I can kind of address that somewhat. They like to get a good four-month lead time on it, because it takes a while for the whole process paperwork that gets submitted and so forth to the retirement board. And so, yeah, it's about a four, three to four months. And usually, a principal or your department head will, will kind of get a sense, or have kind of gotten the hint that, geez, I heard Connie Martin is deciding she's going to retire next, you know, this year. So, they will, would address her and say, are you in fact, and can you get your paperwork in? Then that's basically what we've been doing, yeah.
And that's, that's what we've instituted is, like, an all-out email to all staff, notifying them of procedures. They're not policies, but it's kind of best practice. If you want to have, you know, to be able to retire on time as you deserve to, make sure that you, you notify by a set date. The challenge was that in the past year or so, there are people that have been waiting for a very long time. So, they're doing due diligence to rectify that situation and, and get people back on track.
It is unfortunate, sometimes someone will fall through the cracks. The paperwork might have gotten shifted to the wrong, wrong part of the desk, and it just gets lost, which is a sad thing, but, and it's not good for that person, but it does happen. I know it has.
Well, those are the type of things that when we do implement a system, it's, I just think that we, it's actually something we cannot allow to happen, because people rely on that money, and you're going into a different uncharted chapter of your life. You want to know that you have an income. So, we want to make sure that we reassure the retirees and work with them so that they don't feel that fear. So, by notifying me, now I have them on a list. So, instead of just depending on one staff member that's already trying so hard to keep up and do the backlog, instead, it comes through me. We're doing, we're offering retirement workshops, again, we got 25 respond, you know, responders, so we're going to offer that in February. And again, like you said, it does take about four months. So, even though there may not be an existing policy, because they know it takes time, they tend to notify you quickly. I got some emails that said they're going to retire next year, which is good, because it's, you know, they're giving me early notice. Mm-hmm. But anyhow, we're going to make sure that that does not happen. Right now, we're, we're doing the retirement workshops, we're notifying them, these are the next steps, and we're going to keep a spreadsheet of all of the retirees, and as soon as all of, you know, things are going to start quieting down after the firms that got it in the budget, and we're going to start meeting once a week. And then, if we keep them notified, and there's correspondence between us, then they're not as nervous. So, if we update the retirees, we're still waiting on this, you know, then it's just, it's all about communication. So, we will improve those type of things as well. The next system is that, as I explained during the budget, when we had budget meetings, the budget that I suggested, I would never suggest a budget that you don't have some type of buffer in transportation or tuition, things like that. But as I explained, I didn't build a buffer in, because why would I increase the amount that we have to cut right now? And what if we did have students that left the district, like what just happened last month? We had several students leave by coming, not leave, they left out of district and came in district, which is a big savings for us. What if I would have cut that amount, like, if we would, if I would have suggested that, and then we have all that save, you know, that savings? I didn't want that to happen. So, one of the systems that I believe that we should implement too, is to keep you guys updated each month. Let the student count match the money. So, I, for instance, there were 160 students when I first built the tuition spreadsheet, and when it went down, when the amount went down, I was able to say, what happened here? And Billy Casey, she, one of the people that monitored the circuit breaker, she was able to break it down and tell me all of the students that had left the district, I mean, left the out-of-district placement and came in district. So, if I make the number of student match the dollars, you'll start to see the flow and why it changes, so that you understand. Same thing with transportation. As I explained, we just had 32 kids added. So, it's not that we're just adding buses to add them. We have 32 students that just, their IEPs or something indicated that they needed special ed transportation. So, that's another one. Weekly salaries, we summarize them on one spreadsheet rather than just paying it. That way, it identifies trends and variations in payroll, so I can immediately investigate if I see anything odd. For instance, this week, we had $265,000 in crossovers. That was very alarming, because we usually only pay 70. When I went to find out from payroll, they said, that's all of the stipends that are paid twice a year. So, my point is, it was okay, it's just something that we had noticed. I start to see the trend of when salaries go down and long-term subs go up, you should see offsetting trends. So, I just wanted to let you know, we are tracking that type of stuff as well.
In the Munis system, and this was something I noticed. So, we generally have a good idea of what our cost is for total salaries. And as you said, there's always, hopefully, there's always a little bit, you know, to allow some ebb and flow. Why can't we, or can we allocate that to show that it is, you know, one of the things I, that always, I know in a lot of these things, we know we have set costs. We have set costs. So, why can't those show as being already allocated?
Oh, I think you mean, like, at the greater Lowell Tech, I, we implemented purchase, it was payroll encumbering.
Encumbered, exactly.
So, we would encumber, it's much like a purchase order. So, if you know you have a $100,000 employee, you do a purchase order for $100,000 in that line, it doesn't show any amount available. But if that person leaves and they're replaced with an $80,000 person, now, you'll have an $80,000 purchase order and 20 available. So, then my projections are always really easy. Instead of taking days to do, it's very nice. I loved it. It takes a little bit of work to do, but that was one school, and it took some work. This, I would have to get the city on board to do that as well, because, you know, I'm not sure, I don't know if I need, if we can do different departments. I don't know if it has to be a citywide effort or not, but it's really, it's excellent.
You would think that it would be, I mean.
Beneficial.
Real beneficial, because then you would know what you have encumbered in, anything that you have free, and like you said, you know.
Real dollars.
Real dollars, in real time.
Yes.
Real dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Because, as you pointed out earlier, you know, you could have planned your budget with, you know, Andy Dakota was teaching for 30 years, and he's at this salary. Andy, you know, retired after the budget was planned, and now you hired Jerry Natta, who's a lot cheaper, because he has no experience. So, you saved that amount of money, and that shows that we have that available.
Right. Well, that, that is an excellent system, but right now, what I've had to do, just so you know, these, I'm, yeah, I'm doing it manually. So, right now, because of, when I would go through the budget, when it was built, there could have been eight people, and they could have been at lower salaries. And if they were replaced with eight higher people, when I came in, and it didn't make sense to me, and again, I wasn't here when the, when the budget was built, so there may have been a reason for it, but I couldn't find the reason. So, what I would do is run a report. I'll give the example of Paris. The budget had 413 Paris in there. But when I went into payroll, which is the actual, that tells me what, how many people were actually paying, there may have been, I think they were, I'm throwing numbers out there, but there were 413 in the budget, but there were 440 in payroll. So, some of them, we realized were long-term subs that, that were inactivated, but then there were still 14 too many, right? So, I knew that we needed additional dollars to cover that, so I put that in our budget as a placeholder. But then, when I ran the budget for teachers, because of some of the retirees, there looked to be a savings of 212. I put that as a placeholder, because again, I'm being as honest and transparent, not holding on to any buffers, because I feel like we can get through this together, and I'll come to you each month and say, oh, we're short, and we're going to be short, we're going to, we're going to have extra here. You know, I gave the example just now of finding the money in the lease account, you know, I'm going to share this each month and give you the projections. So, I'm very transparent, right, you know, all along the way. But anyhow, that has manually been done, and it already has been accounted for. Some staff changes might have occurred this past month. I didn't update it since then, but it's in there from the last time.
But we are going to be looking to see, is that available in Munis? Because I do see encumbered.
Oh, Munis definitely has it, because I, the Volk, we had Munis, and I implemented the payroll encumber in there. Well, I didn't, my staff did, and they were, you know, it was a lot of work, and it was amazing once they got through it, so.
But we are working with the city, we will eventually down the road.
If, if it, if it works for them, I, if it's something that we can do in our department only, I would talk to the auditor, auditor and payroll about it. But if we could, if they allowed us to do it on our own and it doesn't affect them, I, one, we would definitely want to do that.
I would think we would. All right, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm. The next thing is completing step increases of current staff during the budget process to ensure availability of data for City Hall to avoid the complications we faced this year. Instead of waiting until the summer to provide it, it was very unfortunate, the city payroll office, if we send it all to them all at once, then they're bombarded in the, you know, it's summertime, she may have her own plans, the payroll office at City Hall. So, now, we're going to do it during the budget process, do all the step increases then, and then we would only have to update it, update those that have changed since then. So, any problem we find, we immediately say, we don't want this to happen again, and find, you know, a solution. So, that step increase was my first problem when I arrived, so that's been corrected. Implementing checks and balances with student activities, such as separation of duties and reconciliations. With all of our general fund account or grants, we flow through the city, so there's a second set of eyes right there. You have the city auditor, so they catch things, and they might stop things that don't make sense, or things that may not have a contract. But student activities, the funds that we raise, the enterprise account, that is, that's controlled by us, so it should, you should never have one person overseeing something because you need the checks and balances. So, the young lady that's assisting with that, she's, she was an auditor at JP Morgan before, so she's, she's really good at the internal audit stuff. She has implemented all kinds of systems, like she notifies the schools weekly. I don't know, that was ambitious. I told her, I don't know if she can maintain that, so, but to notify them weekly or bi-weekly of all the activities she knows of, so that then they have a chance to say, wait a minute, I sent you a deposit 10 days ago, why isn't that listed here? Now, it tells us we lost a deposit, something happened. But anyhow, so we're doing reconciliations. We also, one of the key things in accounting is your sequence of checks. If you know that you're on 1 through 10, and then you jump to 20. If you know that you're on one through 10, and then you jump to 25, well, where'd those 15 checks go? So we're implementing checks and balances and separation of duties with that type of stuff.
And all of these things that we're putting in place, especially regarding payroll, excuse me, are we storing them where they are now available, you know, by more than one person? So, you know, hopefully this won't happen, but, you know, should somebody come in and steal you away from us, you know, and I, I, Superintendent, I agree, I, I'm right with you, okay? But I'm just saying, you know, I, I know one of your challenges was being able to locate all of this information easily. Are we making this, putting it somewhere where multiple people have access to be able to see it?
Yes, I believe in cross-training too, because if you cross-train, now you have two, um, two people sharing ideas and then you're not stuck. We have one gentleman that's trying to do the backlog of the My MTRS deduction reporting and the retirement packets and the service buybacks. If he's cross-trained with someone else, which we started the cross-training with the assistant HR director, now you have two people, two sets of ideas, and you can perfect a system by having more people brainstorming. So yes, I have more people involved. I document everything. I'm a, I'm an accountant all the way, so I document. And I do keep everything shared with me and all of my staff, so they're having access to it. But if I did, if, if I was ever leaving, one thing I believe in is, um, doing a thorough review of everything with the, you know, to leave for the new person. So I would never leave then. But the next one is, um, the district will review grant budgets to maximize our spending potential. Right now, everything's at a, an overview glance, but here's an example. With grants, if you put an MTRS staff member on there, you get charged 9% automatically. And we're already paying the 9% as individuals. We pay 9% to the state. So if we take the, My MTRS staff off that and put non-MTRS staff, we save 9%. On one grant alone, that's $150,000, you know? Just by rewriting it, write the grant with your Paris, your special ed Paris, let's say, instead of your special ed teachers. Now you don't pay that additional 9% fee. So we're going to review all of our, um, the things we can control and find ways to maximize efficiencies or save money in that way. But, you know, we're doing that at a bird's eye glance right now.
With all of these other things that you've been working on, have you given any thought to the way the budget is not only presented to us, but presented to the city or kept as far as being? I mean, I, I think one of the things that we've learned this year is, is the school committee needs to, um, be informed of, you know, exactly what the grants are and what percentage of, is being charged to revolving funds, you know, um, food service accounts and all that. So we know that, you know, if, you know, Desi gives us a letter this year that says, you're allowed to charge 10% for indirect cost, then in your budget presentation to us, you will note somewhere that, you know, we are allowed to charge this amount, it totals this, and you will find these on all these different pages. Because what was happening before is we would get a footnote on, you know, page three and a footnote on page 10, and we never were given any total. So we really didn't have a total amount of dollars that, you know, we were told that was being charged to the food service account or to the facilities account or to whatever it is. Um, I think just to, again, clarify it and, and give the school committee members an idea of, um, you know, what is being charged, that we somehow worked that in.
So we have been discussing that, and I think that Ms. Turner's reports kind of are, we're trying to reflect some of what we're thinking about the next budget process. So when she alludes to something in a report, she's also providing the backup documentation. So we talked about that being part and parcel of the budget and not being at the back of the book, but actually being right following that section so that she can, you know, point to it and you can ask some really pointed questions about it.
Doing it in that way actually safeguards me as well. Instead of me feeling the weight of $181 million on my shoulders by me doing it in this format, by separating it by tab, 2100, 2300 for instructional, you know, the, the way it was done was fine, you know, doing the entire budget with the backup in the, um, back of the book. But doing it this way with your stat, your, your backup data right behind the sheet, you're more likely to look at the backup data and then you would be able to ask the questions of me then. And if I made a mistake, you would catch it because it's right there. So yeah, we're, we're considering other ways that, to do things.
Thank you, please continue.
Actually, that was the report. If you have more details, um, I mean, those were the identified systems right there, but...
So last week, or the last school committee meeting, we thought, um, up until the Monday, I guess, that we had, we had found, or you had made suggestions to close that deficit. And then we found another issue with, um, underfunded insurance.
Yes.
And I know you tried to explain to me, um, I think that night, about a journal entry. But would you just try that again for me? Because how, how that is, is done at, at year's end?
Sure. And as a matter of fact, I, that, I said it's done, but that was my little summary sheet and I actually can find it here. Exhibit, um, I think it's G, which is, exhibit G, there's several pages in those Munis entries, the detail behind the account. Luckily, the city CFO read my report to you. I had thought we had a $2.4 million deficit. And again, that's a moving target and instead of complicating or confusing you, I don't change it because until that's approved, each number's going up and down, like special ed tuition. When I put it up, and now I show it as a decrease, it's on a decrease on what I suggested, not on the original budget. We haven't even approved it yet. That's why it's getting complicated. But, um, so the journal entry, luckily, the city CFO read my report and saw that I didn't have dental. Well, dental's not listed in the budget, so there's nothing in the budget. It just says, um, employee premiums. Um, we pay $1.4 million a month and it's consistent. And I got that amount from the city, you know, the city originally, so it was in line with what I got. But unfortunately, that doesn't include dental. Dental is a journal entry that's charged to the schools at the end of the year. So the $1.4 million that we get charged each month is just health insurance. The $750,000 is done once a year at the end of June. So being that it's not in the budget and it's not part of the date, you know, the detail, I didn't even know that it wasn't, um, there was something missing there until Connor Baldwin brought it up and showed me.
Okay, so explain to me now, we have a insurance account that we have X amount of money in. So at the end of the year, if there's not that $700,000 there, where does that money come from? Because I did, I, I looked as, as much as I could, at the, at the end of the year last year, we were given 15 pages of transfer requests, 531 line items totaling $6 million. Uh, and I didn't see a dental insurance transfer in there. So where does that money come from to pay that amount to the, to the city?
Here's the example. There are two types of transfers that occur. One is a budget transfer, and that's what you have to approve as the school committee. A budget transfer is moving the money from one account to another. So your overall account, we actually moved the money. That's what you saw. There's another type of transfer called an expenditure transfer, where if we accidentally charged one line, we could do an expenditure transfer to move the cost to another line. So that's why you wouldn't have seen when they did transfers for circuit breaker. You wouldn't see the transfer because they weren't asking, it wasn't a budget transfer. They were moving the expense. So if they already did a million dollars in circuit breaker, they would do an expenditure transfer, moving the expense from the circuit breaker line to a revolving account. You don't see those, that you approve the budget only. The expenditure transfers are done behind the scenes. Um, and that's only if you have expenses that need to be re, you know, moved to another line. So the city, when they did the transfers, um, it's like an expense transfer. They might have charged their dental account and then they would do a journal entry to move the expense. They would decrease their account and increase ours. It's a journal entry moving the expense. So it's a behind-the-scenes transfer, moving the expenses, but you should still know about it because it's, should have been in the budget.
So is there actually any real money moving around?
I'm sorry?
Is there real money coming from our budget?
No, 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 there's no need to be alarmed with the expenditure transfers. All the expenditure transfers do is, let's say, I'll give an example. Right now, it's very complicated to charge everything to the grants when we didn't even have the grants approved when we set up payroll. So people might be charged to their, um, a salary line and then eventually we'll say, oh, move that expense from this general fund account to the grant account. Or like health insurance, we'll move it to the grants at the end of a quarter. So all it's doing is moving the expense, not changing the money at all. And that's what the city did. They, um, do a journal entry at the end of the year, moving dental costs to hit us. Unfortunately, we didn't have the budget end of it, so...
And did they explain why they do it, insurance, dental insurance that way, instead of, instead of doing it the same way we, I mean, in, 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 in the, in the private sector, you know, my, every week I have my insurance deducted from, you know, my Aflac insurance, health, dental, whatever it is, is deducted from, you know, the payroll. And I'm sure that's the same for all of our employees. That money gets deducted if they choose to take the insurance. So why aren't we billed quarterly or monthly or, rather than it just one lump sum? Do we know?
No, I don't know why, why it's done that way, but I can say that it was done that way historically, because I went back several years and that's why you have several pages of exhibit G, so that you could see the city, the city has been doing it like that consistently. So, um, it's not something that was implemented this year.
I, I know, it may not have been, one of the things I, I have come to really detest hearing is, well, this is the way we've always done it. I mean, look at, this is the way they've always done maintenance to our schools and we know that has to change. So, um, go ahead Superintendent.
So I was going to speak to that and say that, um, not at this exact moment, but when we're, we're crafting the next budget, that those are conversations that we need to have, because we need to think, just because we've always done it, is there another way that would be beneficial for us, you know, to, to see the whole picture for our employees? And so those are conversations that we definitely do need to have. We need to, um, look at things and ask questions. And it's not to point fingers, it's just to learn, um, that maybe there is another way.
And something that I happen to do is I study, um, I, like, I'll do a historical analysis on something so I can see the trends. For instance, on the substitute lines, in order for me to project for you, you know projections on substitute lines is very difficult, because it could change every, you know, all the time. But what I can do is compare previous years to this year, and I can see that, oh, we have low substitute lines, and then when we get near the holidays, our subs jump to 230 per day, right? So I can start to watch these trends and it helps me project for this year. So the same thing will happen with health insurance. Um, right now, the city pays for the health insurance and then they charge $1.4 million to us each month, right? We're billed for that. I want to know how many employees do that and I want to watch the trends, like, do we, when we have people leaving, is the health insurance decreasing? You know, I want to do exactly what I said about tuition and transportation with you. The student counts, I want to know the employee counts. How many people are covered into that? And then that way I would be able to budget more accurately too. So we will work with the city and understand these type of combined, um, or, you know, intertwined systems. We just haven't had a chance to do that yet, but...
At this point, I guess the question is, when do you both project, um, that we finally finish this year's budget? Um, you know, it, it struck me how odd it was that in June, uh, we actually passed this year's budget originally in May. And yet, in June, the school committee was asked to retroactively approve the prior year's budget, which I thought was not a smart thing to do at that point, because there were issues. But, um, I would like to get this cleared, no more quickly, I'm sure, than you. Go ahead Superintendent.
So at the, if, if you recollect at the last school committee meeting, the school committee requested that we defer on voting on the actual lines to move until after the audit. So we would anticipate that at the next school committee meeting, we can have, um, information for you to, to vote on and then, um, hopefully have a balanced budget. At this point, we do still need to look at that $700,000 and try to reconcile that piece.
The budget as, as is, is already done. What the difficult part has been is trying to find a way to close the gap without impacting the students. So as you knew, we had a $2.4 million deficit and it's a moving target, because I told you, we keep identifying new things. And it's like, so we would like a starting point, yeah, bills, like bad bills, for instance. Every, yeah, we, constantly, so, um, and if they're small, the bad bills, we can, we can, it's immaterial, right? But, um, if it's big, we have to go through the city, which by the way, we do need to request, um, the school committee would need to request of the city council to pay those bad bills. I spoke to the city auditor and he can't just pay it. Even though we had a slight, you know, there was $81,000 available that would help pay our bad bills, it flows into free cash. So now we have to request it from the city. But that has to be a formal, um, request, so...
Oh, we just say to the city, here you go, pay it. Which is, I mean, I, I, you know, Ms. Doherty, um, was here last night, uh, on, on the school committee's motion to look to see if we could, um, get back what many of us truly believe is grant money that was intended to come back to the school. And, um, watching that meeting at home last night, I was very disappointed, um, to basically, I'm getting the impression we're not getting that money. And that's, and that's too bad, because I think the grant pretty well specifies that it was our money.
Um, I agree. I, I understand that Medicaid reimbursement flows to the city and I did contact the Department of Ed and legally, they don't have to give it to us, but most communities do share it with the schools, being that the majority of the cost are our cost. You know, it's all of our special ed cost. But again, that, I don't know what they've historically done. I know it used to, when I was here 10 years ago, it was shared with us. As far as the grant itself, though, that was completed by Jay Lang and, um, Bill Silva. Why would we complete a grant if it wasn't going to be for us? I mean, that was our effort. As far as E-rate, we're paying the telephone bill. We actually paid the consultant that does the E-rate application, but the money goes to the city. So that I didn't understand either, but those are the requests that we would make of the city council and...
I believe last year, we, we did request the city council to reimburse us for, um, the E-rate account and also for, uh, out of district or school choice funding. I think we have to request that also. Um, so it's something we should look into. Before I adjourn, um, school committee member Hoey and school committee member Martin and Mayor Samaras, who's here, or is here, uh, does anyone care to add or, or, um, speak about anything at this time?
No.
Apparently, that would be no from above. Mr. Dakota?
No, I don't. You want a motion to adjourn?
All right. At this time, I want to thank you for, um, your efforts. I know, um, we have a couple meetings set, um, and we will look at what, you know, what we will bring forward for those meetings, uh, also, but I want to thank you for your time and effort. Motion to adjourn? Seconded by Mr. Nutter. We are adjourned. Thank you.